All right, good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. This meeting of the City Council is now called to order. Ms. Hawkins, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Buck.
Here.
Counselor Maboo.
Here.
Counselor Wedlin.
Chair.
Counselor Verdic.
Here.
Counselor Corrigan.
Here.
Counselor Raff is excused and Counselor Atkin.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, everyone, will you please stand and remove your hats and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here to provide public comment? Okay, I don't think so. It's all city team here today. Next, we have the consent agenda. There's four items on the consent agenda. We have the meeting minutes from June 17th, July 1st and 15th, and then August 5th. Resolution 2541, this amends a cooperative agreement with the state of Oregon. Resolution 2543, it's authorizing the signing of an IGA for the municipal judge. And then we have the authorization of the purchase of a Vector excavator truck. All right, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, the motion was made by Counselor Maboo and seconded by Counselor Corrigan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes six zero. Nothing removed from the consent agenda. Okay, and then moving to council business, we have the quarterly council goals update. City Manager Bennett is gonna review the 2025.
There we go. And I noticed that I'm the only one that doesn't have the little fuzzy thing around my microphone. I don't know, I just feel kind of.
It was gone last time.
I know, it's all right. If I'm extra echoey, please let me know.
Chair.
No, it's all right.
Stop taking off. Don't take them off.
Would you do me a favor and breathe on it first? Okay, thank you. It's my pleasure to give you the third quarter report. I think you all know that after you set goals, the first quarter, what we do is we develop the work plans, which you then approve usually a couple of months after you've adopted the goals. And then the other three quarters of the year, we give you a report on our progress. We actually made quite a lot of progress on most of the goals, not all of them, in the third quarter. I highlighted the big accomplishments in the third quarter in the council report. I'll run over those really quickly. And then I will also note that I invited those folks in the organization who are responsible for various goals to be here. So if you have questions about any of the goals and our progress, we have resources available to you. Probably the thing that seems the most current is the Foothills project launched. I believe the Citizen Advisory Committee had their first meeting last week, and so we're off and running on that project. The second was, as you all know, we revised the DDA for the North Anchor properties, and we successfully, thank you City Attorney's Office, sold the East property last Monday. It wasn't quite as fast, but that particular property is now owned by UDP. And we're working collaboratively with them on their investment strategy. They have prioritized, I believe, as you know, the hotel over the multifamily project in terms of trying to get one of them going sooner. We've done a pretty extensive survey this summer, over 400 responses about gas-powered landscaping equipment. And you, as a council director, though, include a question about gas-powered lawn equipment in the community survey. So we'll have more results for you, probably in early December. The Tree Task Force has done quite a lot of work, and I know Counselor Wedlin has been keeping you updated there. And also, we were able to bring onboard a brand-new urban forester, which was part of implementing the community forest, urban and community forest plan. And she will be taking many of the lead actions on that, especially as we are really in the throes of confronting Emerald Bashmore. We signed an agreement with the EPA for the Whitfield loan for the wastewater plant, which is a pretty significant milestone. We made a lot of progress on South Shore Fire Station. I am sorry that item got pulled through today. It really wasn't ripe for council discussion. It's okay. I want to bring it to you when there's actually something for you to decide, as opposed to three boxes on a map. So we'll be doing that soon. And then you adopted Twenty is Plenty, and we have begun implementation plan for rolling out the signs for that, as was outlined in the report. And then last but not least, we got some grants to do the housing work and the code audit. So those are the big things, but I know you might have questions about other projects on the list.
Okay, yes, thank you. Questions? Goals, updates? Counselor Verdic, questions?
How are we doing with the economic development? And I know since we've lost some staff, like where are we at with that piece?
So actually, we have, and I think this is outlined, I'm gonna point you to the page so that, I think it's the second page of the report. It's under your second goal. We've actually contracted with Mary Bosch, who's the person who did the data work for us in 2020 that actually led to the initial economic development strategy. So we have her under contract and in fact are meeting with her tomorrow. We will start with an update of retail businesses and commercial space businesses, just to find out where we are. We do review the market data for the office products once a month. And then after we get the data, we'll roll into an update of the strategy. And that will involve, as soon as I have it, a fairly extensive outreach plan to various businesses and some inventories of commercial landlords, too, to find out what's going on for those folks. So that is gonna, like I said, launching tomorrow.
Could, what is the kind of current timeline on the wastewater treatment plant? Stefan? Oh, that was your question? Oh, my goodness.
Erica, are you able to answer that? Looks like the one person I forgot to invite was Stefan Broaddus, sorry.
He's probably watching downstairs. Good afternoon, I'm Erica Rooney, Public Works Director and City Engineer. We have just begun the process of engaging Jacob's engineering to start the design, to, excuse me, to present a proposal. And I believe he said to us the other day that right after the first of the year, we should be able to come to council with some updates on that, with some timelines and schedules and things like that. So was was your question specific to a date, like when are we starting or when are we finishing?
Yeah, when are we starting? Where are we at right now?
Okay, don't have that definitive yet. I think we'll have some really solid response to that come the first of the year.
You remind us, too. So is Jacobson, they're pursuing a different technology?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it's not, it's not the Aqua Narada that was proposed before.
Done with that. So they're, what they're, what they're working on now is kind of the redesign, if you will, really, really the design of the whole facility.
Yes, same footprint as far as the site goes, so it would be using the same amount of land that was identified before, but a completely different method and operational.
Okay.
Erica, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they still have to meet the same outcomes as well. The same energy consumption outcomes, the odor, the water quality outcomes.
Yes, yes.
I think that all of, that was what you all, when we lost Epcore, that's what you all asked, is that whatever technology is used on the site, it still meets the same outcome-based objectives.
Right.
Is that, am I right?
Yep, that's, that's correct. I mean, obviously, we have to meet the DEQ parameters as well, and those were first and foremost. And then they're working on the other issues, the visual for land use review and things like that, that they'll have to go through. They're taking what they learned from the first round and applying that to their current design that they're working on.
Counselor Verdic.
Go ahead, John.
So some of the previous work that we did is still carrying over to the new plant, so.
A lot of lessons were learned, yes, and a lot of things were identified, and yes, we are using that to the extent we can.
Right, so when you say that we will probably have the same footprint, but just a different engine? So essentially, under the hood, no one will really know really the difference, and we're able to stay within that footprint?
Yes, yes, the same site. So it'll probably take, from what they've talked about, it'll take up almost exactly the same footprint as we had before. Those people walking down the street won't know the difference.
Will never know, right.
Yeah, yeah.
And it will never smell.
Never's a big word, but yeah.
Right, okay.
Correct, that's, that's the goal.
Good, thank you.
And I believe City Manager Bennett was kind of included this in, you know, her clarification, but I just want to make sure from a, you know, an efficiency point of view, we did a lot of work with local sustainability groups and a lot of discussion that we really maintain or even do better than what we had previously. I just wanted, that's really important to me, that we keep that efficiency up there, and if we can use solar or whatever the case may be, if we just kind of make sure we keep those communications going and work, strive to that.
Absolutely, that's all part of the process that we'll be going through with them as well, yes.
Are they working within the same kind of cost parameters that we had, you know, provided to Epcore before and we're kind of working under?
I think that their, the goal, our goal is the same, to minimize the impact to our rates, yes.
Okay, okay. Counselor Maboo?
Yeah, no, I was asking for the archaeology.
I would say, remember you all did a special procurement, you approved a special procurement to allow Jacobs to hire an archaeology firm to make sure that we identified any prehistory issues that might exist on the site. I don't know where they are in that work.
I have not seen the results of that yet.
Okay. Do you have another question on this topic?
The last part is that all the real estate is all over as far as acquisition and so on, and.
We're talking about the real estate today.
I would like to answer that question for you in an executive session.
Oh, okay. Can I ask a different question?
Of course.
On the, just, it's great that we have the, Laura, on the UDP agreement to acquire the property and so on. What was the date that we think that we'll start excavation or range, date range?
Let me just say that the current DDA disposition and development agreement requires them to begin construction by July 8th, 2024. And although I'm sometimes given other estimate dates, I continue to believe that the date will be July 8th, 2026. I'm sorry, not 20, I said, I didn't say, I said 24. That was just a brain meltdown. So if they don't begin construction by July 8th, 2026, we'll be having further conversations about what to do next.
And that's for both projects?
For both properties, yes.
Okay, so we're looking at 2026 as being the great year for Lake Oswego.
The beginning of construction in the, on the North Anchor project.
Right, good.
Counselor Corrigan.
Back on the Foothills district plan, beginning the update of the Foothills District Plan and continuing to evaluate the Lake Grove Urban Renewal Plan, I guess what I'm curious about is now that we're really starting on the Foothills plan, how that's going to integrate with, with the urban renewal plan that will come at some point? How does that fit in time, I guess is what I'm trying to understand.
Well, it needs to follow, and it needs to follow for two reasons. The first is we won't have identified the capital improvements that we'll want to use urban renewal to fund until after the Foothills plan is complete. And so you have to have a, you have to have projects to have urban renewal. And the other reason it needs to follow is that we may want to include some of the properties that are in the west, the East End District, in the future Foothills District. And we can't include those properties as long as they're still part of the East End District, and they have to stay part of the East End District until we've paid off the debt for the East End District. So I would say the earliest you would adopt a Foothills urban renewal plan would be 2028, but it's more likely 2029.
Can, is Melissa here? Oh, can we ask, talk about the library?
Absolutely. Melissa, would you please come on up?
So we, you know, we have the council goal about developing kind of a strategy for, as we put, all activities community center, preferably to the west side of town, public spaces, library services, meeting spaces, et cetera. And we understand that the library advisory board has been engaging, you know, on this topic. Would, and I think the council's aware that we're, we have some other capital projects in the works right now, namely like the South Shore Fire Station, which are, you know, more near, near term, and this is a little bit longer term type of strategy. But the, I think we would be interested in hearing some updates at the council on just how things are going with the current, with the current facility and programming, what's going well, and what are some of the limitations. Is that something that kind of the library, the staff and the advisory board members could talk about?
Yes, absolutely. Whenever you'd like us to come and present on that, we'd be happy to.
Okay, and then what is the scope of the work of, it's mentioned there's kind of a consultants engaged, and what specifically are they kind of working on?
We have worked with some pro bono consultants.
Okay.
And they have just given us some really generic strategy advice around building, you know, building coalitions of support, thinking ahead to things like doing some focus groups or polling in the future. But we definitely do understand that there are other capital projects in line before, before this, and so taking that into account and just really trying to get that big picture strategy so that we can be prepared for that long game.
Yes, okay. How do you all feel about getting information as we go forward on the library?
Of course, yeah.
Okay, okay, well, we can make that happen.
Would you like to time that before goal setting or?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, before goal setting.
Maybe in the fall, we'll find out.
Well, we're in the fall.
Well, you reminded me, the fall ends at the end of December.
We'll see if we can land in, in December, early January.
That sounds wonderful, thank you very much.
No, we appreciate your work on that and the library advisory boards. Yeah, it's good. We want to do things right now, but this is a longer, you know, it's important. Okay, Counselor Verdic.
I just wanted to shoot, the library advisory board is doing a fantastic job, so thank you for your leadership with that board and the chair, just doing a fabulous job. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a planning-related question about the low, the low-income rental tax exemption. I just want, is that, is that something that's on the, oh, is Eric? I thought there was some tax exemption we talked about and we decided not. Yeah, this is.
Yes, we have not begun work on that. We have a lot on our plates, and actually, that is something I need to get started on. So it is, it will be in the works and we will get it started soon, but it is not going to be done by the end of this year.
Okay, no, don't worry, but I, my main question is, this is not the exemption we put the kibosh on.
So Eric, there were three that they considered during the housing production strategy. Can you remind them of the two that they said yes to and the one that they said no to?
Yeah, you know, I think we discussed a number of different tax exemption programs. One would be more sort of available for market rate developments, and that's the one that you put the kibosh on. This one is specifically for low-income rental housing. The one that we've already approved is for nonprofit-led low-income rental housing. So this would have similar sort of affordability requirements, but not have the same requirement that it be maintained and operated by a nonprofit to receive the exemption.
And of course, we, that's the one, the first one, the nonprofit, we've been able to utilize, which has been great.
Absolutely.
Lower priority for the other, because it hasn't really come up yet. Okay, okay, I just want to make sure it was not the one we captured.
While you're both there, my question was, could you just give us a two-minute, three-minute overview of where we are on, on the housing production, sort of at the 30,000-foot level? We've gone through two-thirds of it, half of it, 20%?
I would say more like 10%. We're probably more like in that category, yeah. So, you know, we're, we have until 2020, or I'm sorry, 2026 is the midterm report, so we have, you know, a few years to make some progress that we can reflect in that midterm report to DLCD. Then we were, you know, we have another schedule that would take us into, by the end of 2028 is when we'd have to finalize other things, sort of looking into 2029. But we are making progress. We will have a hearing on one of the first sort of items that will comprise, you know, maybe that 10%, I guess, of the housing production strategy work to adopt an affordable, I'm sorry, affirmatively furthering fair housing policy in the comprehensive plan. That will be coming to you soon, on November 4th, I think your next meeting or something close to it. And there's other work, of course, on the low-income rental housing tax exemption that we'll be pursuing or that we'll be hoping to adopt soon after. We're also, we've received a grant for our work to conduct a code audit from Metro, or we've preliminary received a recommendation for approval of our grant application. The Metro Council still has to make their formal recommendation on October 30th, so we're kind of finalizing those details. Expect to have that sort of closer to where we can release the RFP by the end of the year. So going through the steps there with respect to that grand RFP process from Metro, also on the rezoning of non-residentially zoned properties. We have also received an indication of approval from DLCD. There's still a lot of sort of details to be worked out with that as well. That's another project that we hope to be able to start in early January, the beginning of next year, once all the contracts have been signed and the IGAs are sort of finalized with that. So two grants really for two really large projects that will be related, the code audit and that sort of rezoning work for housing.
And of course, we're already started to work on the Foothills. That's also part of our housing production strategy. We completed the C-FEC requirements. We also completed the nonprofit low-income tax in corporation, nonprofit corporation low-income tax exemption. So maybe a little bit more than 10%, but we are really just getting started on some of the major projects. And a lot of that was to secure funding first, because we need the grants to get started on a couple of them.
So big picture, we've done a lot of preliminary work on kind of where we need to be, and then from a council standpoint. And then we will be looking at 2026 to kind of start to do some revision to our code. And one of the things I'm driving at is that there's housing production, but there's also strategies, but one of the goals was to try to, I don't know, simplifying our code is, is the best way to say it. It seems like we are talking a lot and the code keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. But I guess the, the real question is, as we are moving into, we've had, I think, fewer permits for housing, right, and big projects and things like that in 2025 versus 2024 and 2023, I'm just trying to figure out how to get it so that we can give every tool to develop and make it, I guess, easier for somebody to go through the process, both for the city resource-wise, as well as the person wanting to do a project, whether it's commercial or residential. And so I'm just trying to get my head in when that might happen. Is that like a 2027 timeframe, or do you think there's going to?
That's, that project, we are aiming to complete, I believe, by the end of 2027, if I'm not mistaken. So that is a project that has multiple sort of aims, you know, it's a code audit for both to reduce barriers to housing and to improve economic development, sort of, I don't know, address sort of barriers to business as well. And so, you know, as part of that, we will absolutely be looking at ways to simplify the code. I think that will be a primary kind of method that we will be proposing for, you know, to reduce those barriers and different avenues. So I think, you know, we're, I don't know if we want to say it's an entire streamlining of the code, but we will be looking to do that in as many ways as possible while still not completely reinventing the wheel, if you will.
And I will say, we are targeting it by the end of 2027. So far, the Metro Council has postponed the hearing to award all of the grants, not just ours, but all the grants that they're awarded. We first thought we were going to get it in September, then it was moved to October, and I just learned today that they're moving it to mid-November. And my understanding, it's just a scheduling issue, it's, there's nothing wrong. I was a little concerned, but I was assured that it's just a scheduling issue with the council. So that is eating into our timeline a little bit, so, but we are at this point targeting the end of 2027, but it is possible, if, if this isn't finalized in the timeframe, that we had anticipated that it may take a little bit longer.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, well, I know a lot of the department heads are here, so just thank you all for the work on these goals and everything else within the city. I know we have a lot going on and appreciate all your work. Thank you. Thank you, City Manager.
And I appreciate you coming to council. Thank you.
Yes, you give us people to speak to, otherwise it'd be an empty room a little bit. Thank you all. Okay, is there a motion to accept the quarterly? Is there a motion to accept the quarterly council goals update?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, motion made by Council Wyndham, seconded by Council Corrigan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. Thank you, City Manager. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consideration of Resolution 25 dash 48. This is approving the grant awards and we have Deputy City Manager Madison Thesing. Mayor present.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm Madison Thesing. I am the Deputy City Manager. Today I am here to discuss community grants and the recommended award amounts for the fall distribution of our municipal grants, which we're calling community grants now, which fall under social services, which is for nonprofits and city council goals grants as well. To recap how the grants restructured, this work began about, about a year and a half ago. The main purpose to restructure the grants, we previously had the municipal grants, which were reviewed and distributed by a subcommittee of the Budget Committee, as well as the Historical Resources Grant as well. Through the grant restructuring, we really looked at what, oh, excuse me, as well as the neighborhood enhancement grants as well. So there used to be three distinct channels. The idea with the grant restructuring was to elevate city council priorities, create a consistent mechanism for evaluating our grant programs, have the goal being to advance council priorities. And if they didn't follow with that, was there another home that made more sense, developing a criteria for evaluating funding, so that is metrics. It's having consistent rubrics as well for scoring. Additionally, we talked about restructuring needing to have a consistent mechanism for not only distributing the money, so reimbursement processes, reporting processes, and then also impact reports. And so that was a piece that we had been missing as the life cycle of how this money goes out the door. So this is a recap from what you had been presented in the springtime, but I just wanted to again, remind you how these changes came about. The previous grant structure, as I shared, we had the historic preservation grants, the historic education grants, we had the municipal grants, and then we had the neighborhood enhancement grants. All the numbers total on one side are the exact same total on the right side. So even though we've moved different buckets, all the numbers have totaled the same. So we now have a combined historic preservation and education grants that is still being overseen by our planning department through the Historic Resources and Advisory Board. We have now the two program grants, being the community grants that we'll be discussing today, which is the social service grants and the council goals grants. Again, those are being reviewed now by our, the subcommittee of our Budget Committee, which is the Grants Committee. And then lastly, the thing in green that I do want to continue to call out is that we still have direct, or excuse me, we now have direct funding for our neighborhood associations. Our neighbor, so neighborhood associations used to go through the neighborhood enhancement grants and they also sometimes went through the muni grants and then sometimes they would even go through the historic preservation grants. So now, we now have a home for these one goals and then, and then the, the right alignment of what kind of money and needs are these groups needing. And so I will briefly touch on how, what lives in each one of those buckets. I'm going to actually start on the right hand side for neighborhood funding so that we can continue to focus on the grants. So again, neighborhood funding, this is now an earmarked amount of money for the neighborhood associations, the, the city recognized neighborhood associations. These are pre-approved, reimbursable expenses. Each gets $1,000 annually or are eligible up to 1,000 annually. I'm not going to speak on this, this time, but I just want to again, remind why some of the grants that had been previously in our application pools are now falling into that. So today, what we're going to focus on is the social services and the council goals. Social services grants, that is now $30,000. That is for 501(c)(3) nonprofits that are serving Lake Oswego residents. They do not need to be based in Lake Oswego, but they need to be able to track Lake Oswego services and residents that they're, they're taking care of. The second bucket of money is the council goals, which is 75,000. And this really changed, this was the program I would say changed the most. Used to be that the municipal goal, or excuse me, municipal grants, as well as the neighborhood enhancement grants, really had to be sponsored by neighborhood associations in some way. There needed to be more of a tie unless they were an existing organization. With the council goals now, it's really any individual group or entity. So that could be a private business, that could be a nonprofit, or excuse me, a community group that may not be a 501(c)(3) status. It could be an, an individual has an idea to improve their neighborhood. It could also be a neighborhood association, but it opened the door for more ideas. And then also, I think what I continue to talk about with the council goal grants is as if they are elevating the council goals, but also it's allowing that incubation. And if someone has a good idea, they now have a path and a channel to get resources to enact that idea. The city doesn't need to be involved in every grant. That's actually what, how we've started to talk about. The more that the community can take on these projects, these initiatives, the better because we would like it to be a, a spark point for the community become involved, engaged and organized to, to make change and allow everyone to thrive. So I know that's a lot. I just wanted to get through why those changes happened and then the new structure as well. So as I shared, we then opened it up for applications for these new, two new grant cycles, or excuse me, buckets. We had under the council goals, 19 applicants under social service. We had 13 applicants. One big change this year is we had a consistent scoring rubric for all these applications. It was more than just what was the impact. We really looked at the fiscal responsibility. And when I say we, I actually mean the subcommittee, which was comprised of Counselor Corrigan, Counselor Afghan, Jamie Rye of the Budget Committee, and Rick Elderholm from also the Budget Committee. And they looked at the scoring and they scored every single application across these six categories. And for those categories, it was a high, medium, low with score, with points assigned to those. And, and I will let the counselor speak on how that experience went later on, but really we wanted to know more details in these applications. So the application went from a one pager to now a five pager with really more detailed information of what is the goal that, or excuse me, what is the initiative? What are the goals? What are the metrics they're going to be measuring success on? And then what is also the impact to the community? Not only as a one-time project, but the lasting impact as well. So with that, once the scores were combined in total, they were also ranked. And then the committee had the opportunity to discuss what, what score, or excuse me, what levels of funding that they recommended. And one thing I also would like to note, this is the first year we're doing a rolling cycle. So while we do have money set aside for this year being this, the 30,000 for social service, 75 for council goals, we've, we are opening the application to be rolling into the spring. And so the committee had to make the determination if they wanted to spend it all upfront on the fall, or if they wanted to reserve some funding for the springtime to allow for more applications to come in, or for us to be able to say to a, to an applicant, could you please come back with a revised application and invite that conversation to happen? And so I'm going to briefly go over the two recommendations. And I think at that point, we might want to open it up for discussion. I'm looking at the mayor if that's a good idea. Okay, perfect. So first, the committee recommended three organizations to fund for this fall cycle. Again, it's open, we still have more money reserved for the spring, but that would be to the Children's Center, the Friends of Lusher Farm, and the Clackamas Women's Services. In the council report, you'll see there was the full list of applications that were received under social services. With awarding these three, we have a remaining $9,014 for the springtime. The second recommendation being the, for city council goal grants, we had a total, as I shared, of 19 applications. The committee had discussions on not only the funding levels for this, but also we'll get to maybe some adjustments to the criteria and what projects are allowed as well. The total that you see right here totals to, and I'm sorry, I'm shuffling my papers, $61,731 with then remaining $13,268.30 for the springtime for review. So those are the two recommendations from the sub, the grant subcommittee. I can keep moving through?
No, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions on this part?
Yeah, we're going to talk about this later. We're going to talk about it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you keep going, we'll talk.
And so I can go over the programs considerations that we do have for future. So one thing I did want to note, and this was in the council report, is we did have a few applications that had involved investment on private property. After consideration and conversation with committee, we would, we would propose that we exclude those types of projects. And that would be, we would, we would ask that that council considers that now before the spring review. And then the other two buckets would be for future grant cycles being when I come back in the springtime, thinking about how do we establish the city sponsorship for nonprofits and groups that we know are going to continue to return and what is a mechanism that is not a part of this grant process.
Have we given out grants before for improvements on private property?
Yeah, we have. With the neighborhood enhancement grants, we have.
Right, actually quite a few.
Mm-hmm, because that would have been including neighborhood association, or excuse me, the, the kind of HOA properties, some of that shared property land, properties also that had frontage, so was not the city responsibility, but the responsibility under code is that it's the property owner who's adjacent to.
Right.
There had been funding at times to that.
But what if, what if they're historic property?
That, I don't.
It's a different, okay, yeah.
It does seem like, I made my memories fairly, I, I thought there was a time when, because there were quite a few applications, not quite a few, but some, and it was kind of like for maintenance on HOA property. And it's kind of like, well, you've just got to be maintaining your HOA property.
Down.
Exactly.
Those ones you turned down, I think that you also drew the line about whether the property had public access or not. I do think that you have funded some on private property, but they all had some element of public access to the property.
Yes, I, so I do think we've kind of been moving this direction of drawing a line around private property because a lot of it, there may have been some that were, but many it was just maintenance, yeah, Council Afghan.
In the team, we kept talking about this issue. We had the dialogue and debate. The challenge is if a neighbor homeowner association comes forward and asks money for certain things that public has access to, but it's still private property and they own the liability of it and the maintenance and all of that, is this, does the city want to go into the business of taking care of those type of things? So that was one of the things we kept talking about. Well, this is a homeowner association accountability, but the public has access. So, but we, we went deeper than that. And we said, at the time, the homeowner association was put together, this was the agreement to have these type of things maintained for public access. So it's, it's not black and white, but we didn't think that the city wants to be in the business of improving private properties. The other, we had another applicants who wanted to take a area of a private property, one of the homeowner association area and turn it into a green space. And we said, well, we're really funding, improving somebody's property, but at the same time, this supports sort of the sustainability. So where do we draw the line? So it gets challenging with, again, going into a private property and improving it.
I think I would also add, maybe in the past, there was a, we're not going to, but it was never explicit. And I think what we're trying to get, and I know, I'm going to speak from the staff perspective, that more clear we can be upfront of what we're going to fund and why, the better, because what ends up happening is these kind of gray areas. And, and I really thank the committee of, we tried this process. We, we went through every step to also find these pinch points because right now it doesn't explicitly say that. But we feel that it could create challenges in the future and we're best to, to say that upfront and set the expectation so that it's not going back to this gray area and depending on who's a committee member or staff is making these decisions, which then sets a precedent for some future project or a decision that needs to happen. So I think that might have been at times maybe practiced, but it hasn't been set in stone. And I think, I'll just speak from a staff perspective, more clarity, the better. And I think that's what I, I would like as well.
Yeah, Counsel Corrigan.
Yeah, I mean, that's right. The clarity upfront, it's, clarity is kindness upfront. We need to do that. Yeah, and then the other thing that we bumped into were, so we didn't get any applications that were really great projects and really helpful to our community, which makes it kind of a, it's kind of a tough job. But one of the things that we ran into that we, I'm not quite sure how we should talk about this upfront, but we have really well-funded, well-running programs that came to us to ask for money. They had great projects. They did the right thing. But as we're trying to sort through these things, we also recognize there were people who had no other form of support, in groups that had no other support. So that was another, another thing that we had, another thing that we had to shift through that wasn't exactly delineated in the rubric. So I think that, I don't know if that's something that we should talk about more as a group.
Hmm, hmm, okay. So do you, do we want to make a decision on this here today or, I mean, does everyone feel, or do you want to come back with?
So the decision today, may I, if I may offer, it is the council, I mean, the, the direction of, would you like to fund the levels that were outlined in the council report as the recommendations being social services and the council goals? Those could be two separate decision points. And then if, if, if those move forward, or if they do not, if there's a third channel of, if you would like any changes in advance of springtime as well. I think those are the three decision points.
Oh, okay. So on the criteria.
But you are asking them to award grants today.
Correct, yes.
But these criteria for future, you'd like some direction today. So how do you all feel about the private property question? I'm, I'm inclined to say no, no private property.
Yeah, I guess if, if we had some examples, sometimes it's hard to, all of a sudden you find out, oh, yeah, they want to put a, they want some help for a playground that would service everybody on their.
Private property.
In their, well, it's private property, but it's also public use of everybody. So I mean, it's kind of like, hmm, does that enhance the?
Well, I guess that's, it seems like, so if we say yes, but you're saying it's like yes, then with different criteria. And if we just say no, then it's just no.
Right. All I'm saying is that I think we've been advised and, and I get your thinking. I, I actually agree that we shouldn't be providing public funds for private property. But I just want to make sure that we don't have any examples that really make sense. And I don't know if we've, I don't know if we've fully exhausted that or not, but top of form, yeah, you can think about it, makes sense, but oftentimes the, it's the details that you get into and there may be examples that, that might be part of that. There may not be. I tend to think that we shouldn't be providing homeowner.
Right.
Associations with, but let's, let's just say they wanted to have a, a piece of, I think we've done grants for pieces of art from the Arts Council that, that they, Arts Council says, you know, we didn't vote on these and so these art objects are available. And sometimes the neighborhood could come up with half the amount of money and they have applied for a grant and we've granted it in the past so that they can, we can keep the art object in Lake Oswego and it's for the beauty of, of everybody in the city that drives by, even though it's on private land. So that's, that would be, I guess, a, an example of, hmm, gosh, we could really help all kinds of organizations, including the artist and, you know.
We do host art on private property. That seems like a different kind of situation here, though.
No, but I, well, you're saying though that it's sitting on, I'm just saying that's an exception, so that, that's what I'm saying.
I'm kind of, my question goes along the same line of Counselor Wenland is it's, and Evergreen, I think, has, you know, kind of you enter the neighborhood, they have their sign and there's a piece of art. And that's the type of thing that I would like to continue, but I think it gets a little iftier when you're getting, I would say maybe deeper into properties versus.
I think that one's on public property.
Is that on public? Okay. Then that, I would want to make sure that we can still help them if they have a sign or want to do something like that. But otherwise, I kind of lean towards, I'm, I think getting onto private property is.
Yeah, as long as you feel comfortable that there's no exceptions to this, I'm. Yeah, as long as you feel comfortable that there's no exceptions to this, I'm good.
Yeah, I, this wouldn't preclude neighborhoods from applying, I know we've had joint neighborhood applications for art and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as we can keep that, I'm good.
Mayor Beck.
Councilor Corrigan.
I think the one you're thinking of, maybe, was the project on Boone's Ferry Road, which is a joint.
That was a lot, for sure.
It was a joint between Lake Forest, Lake Grove, and Willuga. And that was placed on private, on public property.
That was, yeah, we do have art on, I mean, I hosted a piece of art on private property, so.
Right.
But I mean, that's not a grant, it's just, we host them. I think it's separate from giving, you know, improving, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
You brought up a good point, and the two that we used the example on, they're homeowner associations and not neighborhood association, and these were specifically on private properties. But I can also see Councilor Wendlin's comment that sometimes maybe a homeowner association wants to do something that is great for the community. How do we create that exemption? Right now, maybe we take an action item and discuss it in the committee. But right now, the applications we've had, we didn't see any of those examples.
Okay.
Mayor Beck.
But, oh, yes.
I think I might be able to provide some helpful information to council on the points that Councilor Wendlin, Verdic, and Afghan are raising. The criteria are flexible. So, if you use general language, as was used in the report, about a general concept of, we don't wanna be funding public improvements, that's an elastic concept. So, that as the committee members apply it, if you have something, for example, a homeowners' association who says, I would like to host an emergency preparedness kit, and it will be on private property, we'll house it there, but it will be available in an emergency. If you, as a committee member, think, yes, we want to fund that, your question would be, is locating a cash on private property a public improvement? Right? Similarly, let's say you have a situation where we have a decommissioned piece of art that you all, that the committee might want to have stay and be on private property, and a homeowners' association said, we'd like to have a grant for some amount of money to purchase this art, so it will remain in the city. You, as the, as, if you, if your criteria was, we don't generally wanna be funding public, I mean, public improvements to private property, your question would be, is purchasing art and placing it on HOA property, is that a public improvement? So, I give you those examples, Councilor Wendlin, because you may not need to refer an action item to the subcommittee, because the language itself, public improvement, is elastic enough, it doesn't have a defined legal concept, that when you're up against these potential edge cases, that you still have some flexibility should you choose to award a grant. But the status quo and the signaling that your staff is asking for would be accomplished upfront by saying, hey, in general, we do not fund public improvements. That's enough of a concept that I think the messaging will come across while still giving you all flexibility in your criteria to fund edge cases that fit within your vision for the program.
Okay, and does that provide, thank you, so Snack, does that provide, would that provide the level of clarity that, for the staff level?
Thanks.
Ms. May.
It's a mayor.
I think.
Okay, hold on, everyone, Councilor Boob first.
No, yeah, I, the only thing I wanna add, what John was saying, like, when we take Mountain Park, is it a private or a public entity? Like, they're trails, and if they wanna improve those, is it on public land or private land?
That's private.
So, if Mountain Park, they have trails that anyone can go walk, I don't think they would say that no one from Evergreen can come walk on Mountain Park. So, if they wanna do those trails and ask for improvement, what do you say? Is it like, oh, we are not giving that because it's in your, it's private property? I, yeah, like.
I can go ahead and answer that, I mean, I think that's exactly the kind of situation where your criteria are not designed to exclude, right? It's designed to balance. And so, you've given a challenging example. Clearly, the trail is private property, but it's open to the public. And so, I would say, again, you have enough flexibility in that criteria that arguably, that would probably fall to a lower priority, because it is funding something on private property. The other criteria might boost it up a little bit. But it's not, I think having a more general criteria would not result in the unilateral exclusion of important projects like that. You still would have the flexibility to consider them, but the truth is, they probably would have much lower priority.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, yeah, I think we kind of know what, it's the maintenance.
Yeah.
Projects, landscaping, you know?
Yeah.
Things like that that are, yeah. And that is typically kind of what we, when we see those, that we have excluded in the past, that's what they were.
Well, but, okay, so here's, here's one, I mean, we, it's not part of the grant system, but when we have an appeal process for something from the neighborhood association, we don't charge them for the appeal. Correct? So, I mean, to me, they're private, you know, if they're appealing something that's happening within their homeowner association or within their neighborhood.
Could be anywhere.
We're, well, right, we've chosen that even though you're private citizens, and you're protecting your private property and your private whatever, we're exempting you from paying the fee. So, that makes sense, I mean, I.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is.
Love to come back to you on that question, cuz I think the next wave of reforms to land use are gonna relate to appeals.
Okay.
I would love to come, as opposed to bogging the grant conversation down, love to come back to you on that question.
I just, I'm just saying, I think we need to be overview of everything that we look at as a city, and not just, so we get clear, so we're clear and objective. That's a big word for the next few years.
So, we're all on the same page that we're going, we're gonna kind of draw the line on the private, private, public improvements on private property?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, knowing that there's some flexibility there.
You can do enhancements, you can't do improvements.
I mean, yes.
You get me exactly, Councilor Wendlin, you were appointed to the subcommittee.
Okay, and then Ms. Susan, you were gonna, there's another item on the, on your kind of going-forward list.
Oh, yes, so some of our applications this round, also, so I, the two, this is not for this spring cycle, but it will be something that the committee and I will discuss for the next year, will be, right now, the criteria, or eligibility, excuse me, is that an organization cannot get three consecutive years of funding. And that was something that was considered in the springtime. However, we don't have a mechanism to direct people elsewhere, meaning, once we've been funding these programs, if they say, we'd like to do it again, is there an opportunity for city sponsorship? So, that is something that I'll be working on this spring, is developing that. Because some of these ones that we are awarding this cycle, this will be their last year of funding. And I think, I think we all recognize the importance of these programs and events, but what's the right level of sponsorship and investment from the city? So, I'll come back with an agreement as a part of this update. And then lastly, the other theme that came up in the applications this round also, were duplicating efforts, and not in a bad way, but we have some events that are taking place that are community-led, but also city-led, whether two different events, or they could be programs that the city is running, but we're getting requests from funding to, to support those programs from the city. And so, just having more alignment on that, and I'm not sure what that looks like yet, but it was the two, two that, two themes, if you will, that we saw in the application pool. So, that's not a decision for today, that's just flagging that there's still some, some things we need to address.
So, so, just in this cycle.
Yeah.
What, if someone had received funding three years in a row, they were excluded?
We didn't have any for this one yet. It's going to be this next year.
Okay, so.
Will be some of them.
Okay, gotcha, it's going forward, three in a row? Cuz this is supposed to be getting, helping folks, one-time projects or getting off the ground, not sustained.
Exactly, and.
Okay, that makes good sense.
And I do believe community partnerships are super important, and if we don't have another mechanism to support them, whether it be financial, or in-kind donation, or staff time, or promotion, it, we start to lose that partnership. And so, I don't think we're ready to just shut the door and say no, but we don't have a mechanism yet to continue that partnership.
So, that will be the city's sponsorship agreements, which is great, Councilor Wendlin.
That's a really good subject to talk about, because I think we, we have been funding a few things over the years for a long time, including the Clackamas Women's Shelter Program, which I think is, to me, that's a super high priority, that's my opinion. I don't care what you guys think, but, and those are the types of organizations that rely on help from communities. You know, now, a cultural fair or something else that, I know we've started some things which are wildly popular and very supportive in the community. So, that's a really good question on how to do that. I did wanna, and I know this is future, but if we're supposed to be voting on, on the grants, there's just something, and this is my point, there's a couple things on, on this list under the council goals, which I would say are not in alignment with, the last bullet point, alignment with community and city efforts without duplicating. And it has to do with LOSN with a $15,000 grant, and the Palisades Neighborhood Association with a $7,685 grant. I guess they're duplic, I mean, those are duplicative, duplicative efforts that the city is already doing, that we have in, and, and I'm not picking on them, I'm just doing, it seems like they're advertising and promotion oriented. We spend a lot of money on, on public, I mean, we have staff, we have all kinds of stuff. And if you look at it, that's over a third of what your grants are in the total. And I just think from a perspective, that just doesn't sit with me right. Not that they're going to say the messaging that's great or whatever, but we have mechanisms to talk about both these subject matters a lot. And we plan to do that and so on. And for us to, you know, personally, I would rather, I mean, the SNAP benefits are ending the end of October. Personally, I'd write the $22,000 check to our food organizations, because Oregon is going to be in, in some really hard times, and we already have these covered. Now, maybe there's something that they're doing special on these things. The other thing that I have a problem with spending money on publicity-oriented grants is that who controls the message? With government money, it needs to be messaging that has to be approved by us. And, and we're trying to give grants for people to go off and spend on their own. And I don't control LOSN or the Neighborhood Association, they could be saying things that are contradictory to what the city's saying. I, I don't, whereas if you have an event, and it's all laid out, great. If you have a, an organization that's been in business for 25 years or 50 years, that we know exactly what they're doing, and they have a great record, I'm, I'm all over that. That's that kind of check and balance system. So, that is, under the criteria, when I read through your program, and then I looked at things, and I tried to match things up, that was something that just stuck out. So, not that they're not great organizations, but I think it, it's misaligned with what our, what I see and what I've been accustomed of doing with the city grant, is, is looking at specific things that we sponsor that we would not be doing ourselves. That's my view of it.
That's a good point. Could we hear a little more about how the Palisades, let's start with them, neighborhoods, like what is their, what is the plan?
Yes. So, the duplicating efforts is not under the current criteria. However, with those, both those organizations, I did reach out to them to understand their plans more, knowing the timing matters. So, for example, Palisades Neighborhood Association, their timeline and strategy was to start this fall and winter, we aren't gonna have signs changed out yet. And so, I had a very good conversation with the vice chair about why the timing matters, not only for implementation from the city, but it'd be confusing to have a campaign going on before the Palisades street signs change, cuz you can't enforce something that hasn't yet changed. It was a really good conversation. The vice chair was 100% on board that they would work together with us to make sure it's in alignment, and we, it will be after it is rolled out from the city for that very reason. But based off the criteria we have today, there, and I know, for the committee evaluating, there wasn't something that said, do not duplicate efforts, that's a low score. What it did say was, does it elevate and enhance council goals, which that is a council goal as well as LOSN? And so, I think, I think there's an element of trusting the process for this one and letting it live through, so we learn. But that future improvement for, or excuse me, improvement for the future is actually maybe not allowing those things to happen, because it does create difficulty, not only from staff coordination, but also it does get confusing if the city is saying something and an organization is saying something differently. And so, I can speak for at least Palisades, they're going to work with us on this. It will be in sync with the city's messages and with a timing that makes sense. And then I will be having.
But what are they doing differently than what the city is doing for all the neighborhoods?
That is, it is, it is more hyper-focused. So, the idea is that it will be videos, and I can send you the application, cuz I recognize I didn't attach all, all applications. They're gonna do videos, which are gonna be their neighborhood members speaking to their neighborhood, it's gonna be on their newsletter, it's gonna be on their social media. So, it's creating content, but it's with local being their community voice and their neighborhood voice.
I do think there is some, it is tricky with them, I mean, if these goals are focused on council goals, there's always gonna be some element, of course, that is just naturally, obviously, they are things that the city is working on, so. And it is helpful, in some cases, having community efforts that are aligned with the council goal and helping, helping to just kind of expand upon it and reach people in a way maybe the city can't. So, I do think that's definitely the case. We wouldn't wanna be, for instance, if the city's sending out something, and the plan for the grant is just to also send something out, it's like, well, I mean, those are just the same thing, you know? But if it's something that the city isn't going to do, then I do think it can be very, it can be very effective. I, I am, you know, we are, especially in regards to, so in regards to the Palisades Neighborhood Association, I can't have less, because that is different, and it does sound like you're in alignment with them. On LOSN, I, there's kind of like two concerns. One, the messaging is important, because I think they have been doing a really good job of educating people about electrification, which is great. That is a goal, that is something everyone is on board with. But we aren't to the place yet where we have implemented any kind of regulatory actions, so I would wanna make sure that they are definitely not ahead of the city on. I think that needs to be very explicit, you know? And I'm also very concerned just about, so half of their grant is just to do a mailer. And if the city does do anything, that's.
We do.
A lot of money. But the other half is for doing other things that I think are really beneficial and engaging with the community that the city isn't doing. So, I would kind of propose that maybe we half, which then puts their grant aligned really almost identically with the Palisades Neighborhood in amount, if everyone was on board with that, as the mailers are really, I mean, we all know from campaigning, they are very expensive, and they pretty much end up mailbox to bin. The mailbox to bin, I literally take mine out of the mailbox and put it up there, normally at night, so I'm not even really looking at that.
Ooh.
I know, it's harsh, it's harsh. I don't even wanna bring them in the house, cuz then they're never leaving, they're never leaving.
Do you recycle them?
I will add that the committee did discuss kind of the sustainability method of mailers and what we're trying to achieve. With some of these, because there was some side conversations, I will be not only sending the award letters, but having follow-up for those two organizations specifically, which was a direction from the subcommittee. And so, it's not to say it's a condition of approval, we are, if the, if the council approves and recommends the levels that are shown, there will be a little bit more engagement than just an award letter for those two specifically.
Okay, and, and.
But council can change the grant amounts at this meeting if they want, correct?
Excuse me, yes, of course, I was not, you are more than entitled to do that, I wasn't saying that. I, the, there will be side conversations, and the committee asked for those conversations to also occur.
And I do think, and mailing out, like. And I do think, and mailing out, like within HelloLO, I mean, we do put out information on electrification already. So, that, I think, to Counselor Wenden's point, which is a really good one, I mean, that is like a direct alignment with something the city is kind of already doing. Counselor Afgham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things we're trying to accomplish is level setting. So this is the first year, and we put the criterias together, and this is what bubbles up, right? So, I think these are the lessons learned that we're learning also for the next cycle. So, one of the things that we would need to build into the process is that nobody gets ahead of the city in case if the city has certain things to decide. So, for example, the gas-powered tools, we haven't made a decision, so there shouldn't be any campaigning. So, we're going to have to build that into the process. So, thumbs up, we agree with you. And we think cutting it in 50% and putting that campaigning for a later time, if we go that direction, makes sense. So, my suggestion would be to cut that in half.
I want to thank you two as well, the two budget figures, for all the work you did on this. You had a ton of applications to go through, and I know a lot of us have sat through this process, and it is challenging. All of the community members who apply for these grants and organizations put a lot of creative thought into them, a lot of time into them, which we really appreciate. And everyone has a goal of making the community better, so obviously, there's no bad applications, which makes it very challenging to make these decisions. But maybe we can, if we reduce the, one, the LOSN grant, I just want to call, there are two, actually, they were kind of just at the bottom of the cutoff, if you will, the Friends of Springbrook Park grant to do that sign at the entry to Wembley Park, helping to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the park, and the Lakewood Center's proposal for that Young Playwrights Program, which I think is, these are two really good organizations that have done really good work, and these seem like two projects we could add into the pot since we're reduced, you know, if everyone feels about that.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
That sounds good.
Could you do me a favor and put that in the form of a motion?
Oh, yes, yes. Well, I want, is there any other?
Any other amendments? Sorry, I didn't mean to get ahead of you. Then, Ms. Osneck and I were just talking about procedure.
Oh, yes, yes.
I wanted to make one more comment about LOSN. They were also going to get a message that you're in the sustainability business, so sending out flyers, this would be your last time that we would support it, because whatever you do has to be in support of the sustainability. So that message was also going that direction. I wanted to be clear that the committees, the subcommittee, had all of those discussions.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 25-48 with the following amendments. Change the award amount for the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network to $7,500, and make clear that that's to reduce the mailer. And then to add to the awarded column, the Friends of Springbrook Park and Lakewood Center for the Arts proposals, that they're full grant amounts, Friends of Springbrook Park, $4,325, and $5,000 for Lakewood.
Second.
Thanks, Counselor Wenden, who came.
Can I have a point of order?
Is that a horrible motion?
And I'm looking at City Recorder Hawkins. This is one of those situations where, even though it is a very simple amendment, the way that we drafted the resolution was quite precise with dollar amounts. And so-
Can we draw?
Hmm?
We have the numbers, I can just add them.
So, could we?
Want to take a break?
Yeah, could we table this?
Can we table this till later in the meeting, and we'll come back with an amended resolution that you guys can vote on?
Yes. Do we have to vote on that? Could we just table it? Yeah.
Again, please don't vote on tabling. Tabling is bad, but just postpone this item until later in the meeting.
We're going to put a pin in it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. That was a good procedure. Thank you.
Everyone, good conversation. And while we're working on that, we're going to move to our public here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
I'm going to go do that now.
We have a public hearing tonight on Resolution 25-47. This relates to special procurement of professional services for the McEwen Road Sidewalk Project. We have Senior Associate Engineer Zach Spruell and Assistant City Engineer Mort Anush Rovani here to talk to us about this. Good afternoon to you both.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and the Commissioner. This is my first council presentation. Hopefully, it won't be last.
We always give you three tries, so.
Well, good. I'm a soccer fan and a baseball fan, so I appreciate that. Yeah, we are here before you to ask for a special procurement process for a project that was approved by the council, and it was identified as a priority work, which is done with partnership with the school district, is extending and building sidewalks in McEwen Street. And we have an IGA with them, and they have taken the design to a certain point, and they have been turned over to us, and we need to move them forward. So, we need your approval, basically sole sourcing with the KPFF, and my colleague Zach is going to go through the background and give information on the cost simplification and also the scheduling for it. And we'll be glad to ask any questions you have.
Thank you for, thank you for that introduction. Right before we get into the full staff report, I'll ask Ms. Osneck just to review the hearing procedures for us.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Buck, members of council. Now, is the time set for a public hearing on Resolution 2547? This is a public contracting policy decision, which is soundly within your discretion. Although it is discretionary, it also needs to comply with state contracting laws, state administrative rules, and our own local contracting code. And the council report sets out clearly that this special procurement does meet those, and it also has some attached findings that explain to you all and the public why it is that an exemption from the procurement code is warranted for this project. The public hearing process will begin with a presentation by staff, as just described. Testimony will then be received from the public for five minutes. The time limits will not include time taken up by questions from council or responses to such questions. Other groups, homeowners associations, will have 10 minutes as set forth in the agenda. At this point, I'll ask the standard question, if there are any financial conflicts of interest for any councilors as to this item, and I'll wait briefly. Hearing none. We are ready for the staff report, and any testimony from the public. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Osneck. Okay. Ms. Spruell, take it away.
Thank you so much, Mayor and city council members. Today, Mort, as he previously mentioned, we're entering into a request for special procurement for the McEwen Road Sidewalk Project, which includes associated stormwater management facilities. So, there would be planters and plantings for collection of rainfall and runoff coming from the sidewalk in the street.
And Zach, pull that microphone right up next to your face.
Yep. So, for this project, we would be partnering potentially with KPFF consulting engineers. They were the design consultant and engineer of record for the original project through the school district. And as far as their ability to perform on this project, they, being a designer of record, they have all of the data that was previously collected and analyzed in support of this project, including the stormwater management drainage reports. And so, for this situation, we're kind of looking at this as far as like a project overview map. The project's improvements generally occur on the north shoulder of McEwen Road between Southwest 65th Avenue and Southwest Christie Way North intersection. And it's, they would be located between the edge of asphalt pavement and the property boundary line. And as you can see, there's a complex web of jurisdictions, but Clackamas County has transferred road authority and maintenance operations responsibilities to the city. So, why special procurement? Well, in this circumstance, we basically are assuming a follow-on contract, which would be considered logical for these purposes. And when the school district initially initiated a contract, they went through a non-competitive procurement process. If we were going through the standard procedures through the OARs, we wouldn't be able to go back to KPFF because it was a non-competitive process. And so, that's part of the reason why we would want to go through this special procurement, because they retain all of the prior knowledge and experience with this project, and they would present continuity with the remaining design services to be completed. And then, also, with a standard procurement process, we would have to go through a, basically, a competitive solicitation process and invite multiple engineering companies, which has its advantages and disadvantages. It would extend the schedule and delay the schedule up to two months. And then there could potentially be increased costs realized, because any new design consultant would have to basically assume ownership of the original design that was prepared. So, this kind of highlights, these bullet points highlight, basically, we would have additional time required, additional resources. There may be some value in having an alternative firm brought on board, but there would also be inefficiencies involved with that. And then, it would also be difficult to show that KPFF would not be the most qualified to finish the design. For next steps, we would look to basically finish the remaining design services. So, right now, we have a permit set of plans, which are basically similar to a 90% submittal. KPFF would advance those plans to final completion, or final construction documents. And then we would also finish our public outreach efforts within the neighborhood by early 2026. We would start the bidding process in the spring of 2026, and we would go to construction, construction completion by the end of August 2026.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yes.
Counselor?
Yeah.
Can you, I know that if we call as a firm to do it, you say that it may be more expensive. How do we know that? Are we sure that?
We know that because there would be time required where the new consultant brought on board, they would have to receive the data and analyses that were performed by KPFF initially. They'd have to study that information. They'd also have to do their own kind of follow-up verification and validation of the information that was collected. They wouldn't be able to simply assume the drawings as they were presented to them. They would have to actually verify and validate all of that additional information. So, we know there will be additional hours dedicated to those activities, where KPFF could go move into the design completion right off the bat and quickly move through those design documents and preparations.
What if they come and say, "We can do it for $100,000"?
I don't think so. I don't think they will.
Well, it's, maybe I can take a crack at responding. That's a very good question. You know, how do we know that? You know, besides the experience and we know what, we are being charged by our consultant, quite frankly. The other thing is, the point is, KPFF has prepared these plans and specifications. They own and they have confidence in those plans and specifications. And they can finish it for this much, we think. But if you were to bring a new engineering firm, they have to do a lot of due diligence in addition to finishing the remaining work. So, that's the reason. So, it's not just like a Lego set that you can just add on to it. They have to go back and verify the information.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I do not think that we have anyone here. Is anyone here like to testify? No? Okay, then we're going to close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion on Resolution 25-47.
Yes. Move to adopt Resolution 2547.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you both very much, Director Rooney. Thank you. This exciting project.
Great job. You'll be back.
Both of you.
Should we, we'll move into kind of updates? While we wait for Madison. Okay. All right. Information from council. Does anyone have any updates?
Oh, I have an update.
Counselor?
It's official. The first one to use the playground at Rosick is a counselor, and it will remain in history. Someone who went through the slide was a counselor.
And didn't get stuck.
Yes.
There's three lawsuits that are coming with little children that have black spheres in faces.
So, it was the best. Honestly, it's, thank you, Parks and Recreation, and everyone who was involved in that project. I was so happy. Because the kids, like, even when we were talking, they would, I'm sure they couldn't say, "Just finish talking, you want to go on."
No, they were very polite.
They were very polite. And it was, I was, it made my heart very happy, honestly. And it made me play a nice game afterwards. Not yet, but that's, yeah, so good. That was-
It was. It was a great event. It was a great job.
There was a lot of, way more people than I thought.
Tons, yeah.
I mean, that was a lot of people, so.
Kids. Yeah. It's great. It was a lot of fun. And that contest, the skate park, it's very impressive.
Yes.
Yeah, the skate park is wonderful.
Any updates, Counselor?
Sure. Counselor Wedland and I attended the Lake Oswego Tiger Water Partnership. Everything is going well. The team is doing a great job. The costs are staying flat, and the production is doing good. And a big shout-out to the operation teams that is doing the water station. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I could talk a little bit about what's going on at the, what we've been talking about, countywide, region-wide. Metro's done this, I've talked about this before, this regional housing coordination work, and they're getting ready to adopt the strategy. The number one action is to accelerate housing production.
Really?
Yeah. It's good. We accelerate housing production. Yeah, you know, it's good. It's been a couple of years on it, you know? Okay. They, I mean, they are looking at, one of the things that's coming out of it is assessing the feasibility for a new metro housing bond. So, that was something. But I will say, like, the housing, like here, you know, we had the question, you know, we are spending so much time on this kind of, apparently revising our code so that we can accelerate housing production when we have a project down here at Foothills that is going to be years out, because we don't have the resources, because we're doing the other things to accelerate housing production. So, some of it seems a little, you know, and I bring that up at the meetings. I mean, it's a little like, okay, you know, I mean, we're not doing any of the, yeah, exactly. The, but part of their coordination strategy is to provide resources. And of course, the city is taking advantage of a lot of the grants and stuff to do work, but sometimes it seems like we have these, I mean, here's what we could be doing. We could be doing it and producing the units, and instead, we're often doing other theoretical things. They also have, they commissioned this cooling corridors study, which produced, not surprisingly, kind of a look through the region at, and it wasn't, I don't know why they called it corridors, because they really were just looking region-wide at where there are areas of, you know, well, there's a lot of heat, and it really overlays kind of with the socioeconomics of the area. So, you know, Southwest Portland and stuff, obviously, a huge tree, we have, we have the biggest tree canopy, you know, and things. So, but other areas, very minimal, because it's very, very hot. And so, again, coming up with, this is at the metro level, with strategies, you know, like planting trees and stuff, I have a hard time wondering why they do this when, I mean, it'd be like the city of Portland, or, you know, the city of Gladstone, or whatever it would be. But anyway, the whole study on that. They want to raise awareness about extreme heat events and associated heat risks, and connect with public agencies, community groups, et cetera. And then Trimet has been out as well. They are having to make adjustments to their routes and things. Well, they're in the process of doing that, so they're starting to engage the public, given their budget shortfall and rising costs. And, you know, after the pandemic, they came out with this kind of Forward Together 2.0, I think it was called. And it was supposed to respond to some of these changes from the pandemic, but, you know, I don't know how well it really did that. And, you know, I have been kind of- And, you know, I have been kind of advocating for, not just a, well, how can we trim this and this? But like a plan, a new plan, because the ridership is not coming back. So instead of just, well, let's trim this. It's like, what's the plan for, like, given the current conditions? And it's tricky. It's not anything they're doing wrong. They just don't, they don't have all the riders going to a central place like they did before. And that makes it very difficult to run a transit agency. So the difficulties they're having are really understandable. But at the same point, we've got to, you know, figure something out because it's not really, it's not sustainable, you know? So they're out engaging on that. And, yeah, that's kind of where things are at, at the region-wide table.
Can I ask you a question on region-wide? Did, we had, I forgot his name, the gentleman who's the executive director of Hacienda.
Yeah, oh, Ernesto.
Ernesto, right. Has anything happened with his request on making sure that we get the right population in?
Oh, yeah. Yes, there was, there was communication. Yes, good question. And we actually had the groundbreaking, Hacienda was a groundbreaking last week.
Last week, yeah.
Which is great. And it's exciting to see things happening on that, on that property now. And yes, so there was kind of an agreement reached with the county within the, within the kind of legal confines of the program through which the project is financed. That, and I'll say in general, it seems to me that there have been like lessons learned through this so far, and we've seen big changes in housing throughout the region, you know, because of it. So it does seem like the message is getting across, and there's been more thought into placements and services.
Are they going to make sure, like, there's, like, for example, a mental institution and housing?
Yeah. And the big thing is Hacienda is, you know, on top of it.
They're experienced. Okay, yeah.
I just want to make sure they're successful because if we have, if we have what happened over at Merrillhurst happen over here, that will be the last project that we will ever see in a city again. And so I hope the agreements are policy versus just, okay, well, we'll, we'll try and take care of you today. But my real concern is, to Ms. Sen's point, provide the facilities for the people that need the help and put it to the right resources. It's not brain surgery, folks.
That is the other, so Metro has brought in, you know, we talked a lot. There was, there were groups of us getting together to discuss supportive housing services. And where that is now is Metro has engaged with an outside firm that specializes in this topic, and they are now engaged going to look at our system here and kind of come back with recommendations. So I'm hoping, again, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Other cities, they say it's complicated because we have three, all these different layers of government here.
But the right solution is the right solution, no matter where you're at.
Yes. I mean, then we need to cut. Yeah, it's, yeah, maybe the three kind of county approach is not the best approach, you know? I mean, yeah, I know. But that's, that's what the three counties wanted. We got into it.
Do the zoo. That's what they're good at. Maybe.
I have a couple of things. First, since Eric is here, I just want to do a shout out to engineering for the meadow lark and treetop sidewalks, which are almost done after the Racine Park groundbreaking. I rode my bike up that steep hill, which I'd forgotten was so steep, because I usually do it in my car. And I'm very impressed. And particularly on treetop, I think it'll make a huge difference to the folks who are traveling to the high school on foot. So thank you so much. Now, I also think the next complaint will be about repaving treetop because when we move the center line of the road and when you take the plastic stuff up, it's, it's not pretty. Second, I just wanted to let you all know the mayor and I are going to join folks from UDP and folks at Clackamas County tomorrow to talk to them about, to encourage the county to enact the ordinance that allows them to have CPACE, which is the conservation-oriented investment in hospitality projects that has to be administered through the county. So if you hear about that, that's what the conversation is going to be about. And then last but not least, on Friday, I leave for the International City County Managers Association Conference. That runs through Wednesday of next week. And then I'm taking a few days off afterwards because I'll be near the Caribbean. And Megan will be pro tem.
Where is it?
It's in Tampa. It's fine. Tampa's fine. It's fine. But I'm not going to stay there after the conference is over. So, anyway.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
I think Madison and the city attorney are almost ready for you so that you can take this action.
Ready?
I'm going to let Ms. Osneck.
So do we just have a new resolution?
You have an amended resolution. It's really, oh, here you go, Martha. They're flying off.
We're together now, yeah.
Ms. Hawkins, have we been messing with our mics? Okay, so it's really a lot of technical procedure, but it's not a big thing. So Mayor Buck, if you can reopen the deliberations on Resolution 2548, we'll have Ms. Thiesing come up. She's going to generally describe the amendments. Then I'd like you, and I'll give you this, to ask for a motion from one of your colleagues to amend Resolution 2548 as presented in the meeting.
Okay.
Then, Mayor, I'd like for you to ask for a motion to adopt the amended resolution.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to reopen deliberations on Resolution 25-48. And Ms. Thiesing, go ahead and describe.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having me back.
Thank you.
I am offering an amendment to Resolution 2548. The first touches on, or excuse me, social, there are two buckets that we are proposing for approval. One being the social services grant amounts as recommended from the subcommittee, which is the awarded amount of $20,986. That was not changed through the discussion. The second item is the council goal grants, which was discussed and deliberated by council. The changes that are going to be presented are reducing the sustainability, Lake Oswego Sustainability Network from $15,000 to $7,500, as well as approving and awarding money to Friends of Springbrook Park for $4,325 and Lakewood Center for the Arts for $5,000. This is a total of $63,556.70.
Okay. Thank you. So would someone like to make a motion to amend Resolution 25-48 as presented by Ms. Thiesing?
I move to amend Resolution 2548 as presented by Ms. Thiesing.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by councillor Corrigan and seconded by councillor Verdic. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes six to zero. And then would someone like to make a motion to adopt the amended Resolution 25-48?
I move to adopt the amended Resolution 2540.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by councillor Verdic and seconded by councillor Corrigan. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All right, any opposed? Okay, motion passes six to zero. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
When are we going to see the next phase of this? The share on the grants?
Yes.
In spring. In the spring.
Or spring?
We will be coming back in springtime. The applications are currently open. They will have the closing review in ending of February. The subcommittee will meet in March, and so hopefully shortly thereafter. And then all reports, and one thing I should note, the grants are now reimbursement. They're not getting the money upfront. And so we will have all reimbursements fulfilled and final reports by the ending of June. And so I can also come back with a final report, if you'd like that.
No, I was asking about the changes that you said we needed to help put input to.
Oh, excuse me, like the agreement.
Right.
We'll do that at that springtime, once we close out this whole year, before the new July one opens.
Will you make the private property adjustment prior to that?
That is correct. The private, it's the sponsorship.
Okay. Thank you.
So we are looking at the sponsorship.
We will need to, yes.
Yeah, would be great, you know, yeah, okay. And could we also have the, around the topic, the, you know, we had talked in the past about, we have the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebration that the city puts on. And then we have the thing that we funded this and in past years for the Asian American Student Union at LOHS. At LOHS, I believe, yeah.
Yes.
And they put on a nice big event as well. But it's very much a similar event, same vendors, et cetera. And we were hoping for some kind of collaboration with those two events, or, you know, the city could support what the students are doing.
Yes. So that would be a part of that conversation of not duplicating. And if we are either choosing not to fund, is there something we could offer in lieu of? Or are we asking for combining? So that is where, that's kind of the, like, if it's not this, is there something else?
Because we know like how much work the city puts into putting on the events, and we can leverage, like we do with Pride and L.O. for Love, where they really do pretty much everything. And here are the students, I mean, they, and through kind of iterations of students, because they've all gone to originals off to college, and now it's been passed down. They've done a great job carrying on. That's, I would assume, great for the team because it's one less thing they have to do.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I don't work on events. What I would say is, coming back in the spring, I would, I would love to be able to maybe bring that staff, the staff member as well, and have those decisions discussed. And maybe it is a time to discuss community events as it relates to that duplicating efforts. And I can't speak on that, but I'd be happy to make sure that when we do have that discussion, we do have the right staff member as well.
Right. And maybe if, I don't know.
I just suggested we collaborate with the DEI Advisory Board and also maybe the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as well when we, probably not be as concerned as the DEI Advisory Board, but it seems like we need to make sure we get clear feedback from them.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
I agree with you that it's confusing to the community to offer very similar events.
Yeah, we're not trying, the goal isn't to reduce.
No, in fact, it may be to enhance and celebrate the, a single event as opposed to duplicate events.
Yeah, especially in leveraging community efforts. Okay, thank you.
That'll be, to that question, it'll be, I'll bring that all back before the new cycle in July.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we are going to move into executive session for the remainder of the meeting. And I'll ask Ms. Osneck to please review the guidelines with us.
Thank you, Mayor Buck. Members of council, the Lake Oswego City Council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of conducting deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions, to consider informational records that are exempt by law from public inspection, and to consult with me, your counsel, concerning the legal rights and duties of this public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session, as I just previously announced. No decision may be made in executive deliber, in executive session, but deliberations will occur at the end of the executive session. We will adjourn.
Okay, thank you very much. Right. This will conclude the broadcast portion of the meeting. We are going to recess, and then we'll reconvene in the side room.